Ms. Ruby, if we could start this morning's meeting, please.
Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, December 2nd, 2015 at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunco, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, please arise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Again, we ask that we remember all those in our community that are less fortunate than we are, locally and globally. We ask that we remember those who've lost loved ones in our community since the last time we were in these chambers, and remembering in our thoughts those that are, again, less fortunate than we are in this time of celebration and holiday and family is also ironically one of the most, the highest level of suicide and drama and trauma in people's lives. So, remember those who are experiencing that. Also, finally, we ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the proper information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Approval of minutes from the meeting of November 18th, 2015, and bills for payment on December 4th and 11th, 2015. Mrs. Rancunco, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan.
Okay. Are there any requests for pausory sales today? Are there any requests for pausory sales? And last call, any requests for pausory sales? See any? So, we will now go to citizens to be heard, and we had two citizens who had signed up to speak, and Randy Barnes is the first on the list this morning.
Good morning, Council, President, Council, Administration, guests. My name is Randy Barnes, 109 Walton Point, Erie, Pennsylvania. And my topic today is a little bit about the budget. You know, to lead on to what Councilman Jones talked about, the less fortunate in the community, and I think about how much the less fortunate need, but what about the people that are fortunate? What if you were a person that was fortunate enough to work for City Hall for 47 years, retire and collect a $68,000 pension, but you had four friends on City Council that was willing to give you another $12,000 a year to come down and hold their hand? So, I would call that, that's kind of the opposite of who Councilman Jones wanted us to remember, the less fortunate. When you're fortunate enough to have a steady job, and that's great, and you earn a $67,000 a year pension, but you're lucky enough to have four friends on City Council that are willing to give you $12,000 a year for the next two years to come down and basically hold their hands, because they didn't feel between the four of them, and those four people that voted for this ridiculous contract were Councilman Witherspoon, Councilman Jones, Councilman Winarski, and Councilperson Rancunco, they felt that they weren't qualified to pick out a candidate that was qualified to be the new city clerk. So, in their minds, they said, "Well, if we give our friend, Mr. Clem, an extra $1,000 a month," which I guess in the big scheme of a $70 million budget, $1,000 a month isn't much, but I tell you, those less fortunate people could really use that $1,000 a month, $10 a month. But instead, what did we decide to do? We decided to give a retired city clerk, Jim Clem, $1,000 a month to come down and hold four grown adult council people's hands, because they didn't think they could get through the next two years with a city clerk that they hired that apparently wasn't qualified, because they didn't feel that they could get through two years. Well, flash, news flash, friends, there were city clerks all over Pennsylvania, and the one that I know in Pittsburgh, I talked to recently, said, "You know, we would welcome any calls from a city clerk in the city of Erie that they needed some questions answered, and there would be no charge for that." But instead, you know, the four council people, Councilman Jones and Councilman Winarski, Councilman Witherspoon and Rancunco, decided that it would be best to give this man $1,000 a month. Now, I asked a request right to know act, what has documentation has transferred between any of the council people and Mr. Clem, and back and forth? Emails, memos, documents? And in a year and a half, there were actually two written pieces of communication between Mr. Clem and City Council. In a year and a half, as an advisor, there was actually two pieces of documentation, $18,000, and you got two pieces of documentation. But we do remember, Mr. Clem is in charge of getting these records archived. And, you know, I stood up here for almost a year and a half thinking we were talking about making PDFs of paper. Well, that second piece of documentation, Mr. Clem basically told us that, no, he had to call Perillo on Parade Street, and they came over and got the microfilm, and they take that microfilm, and they transfer it to electronic data. So, that's part of what the $1,000 a month is, was so Mr. Clem could make the phone call to Perillo Enterprises and tell them to come and get the microfiche. We have to archive these records. It's very important we archive these records, because Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Jones, Councilman Winarski, and Councilperson Rancunco need to access those records on a regular basis. You know, the 1934, the 1935 records, '25 records, the ones that are on microfilm, they don't want to go in and use the microfilm and use the reader. They want to have them electronically preserved. So, Mr. Clem basically gets $1,000 a month to make a phone call and to write two documents to City Council in a year and a half. So, as you go ahead and pass the budget in another week or two whenever you vote on it, remember there's $6,000 in there that you're basically just throwing away. And for those people that are less fortunate in the city of Erie, it's a shame that they see City Council people not take their money seriously and not take their jobs seriously. And you wonder why there's only a 25% to 30% voter turnout? Because when the people that don't vote look at what you do, and you take money from them, and you give it to a man that earns the largest pension ever to make a phone call and to write two documents in a year and a half, they get disillusioned. They thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, isn't that sign up was Amy Comportari?
Good morning, Council. One of these days, I hope Randy will find another subject to talk about. In the meantime, my discussion is on EMTA and the Neighborhood Watch. First, my thanks to President Brennan and the other council members for their support of the newly developing Neighborhood Watch. I'm making developmental designs, and they're receiving quite a bit of interest in our neighborhood. As of yesterday, I met up with Alter Management. Chuck, our general manager over at Alter, is very concerned about the activity that's happening with the Palace Apartments building especially. We have a great cooperation now. We've met up with not only maintenance, but management, and hopefully, one by one, we can do this with each building. My idea is to have floor chiefs as well as building chiefs, and then to report to a section area of a certain blockage, and then to coordinator, which probably I will be. And I have submitted the outlines of these things to you. Once I have a meeting place secured, I could distribute flyers, make more appropriate contacts. Also, please consider that council chambers are already set up for the participation of the disabled, which has plenty of handicap access, handicap microphone, and also follows with the ADA situation, which I am not certain that every building in the city of Erie that would be capable of holding such an event would have the advocacy for the disabled that this building has. Many of our city citizens are disabled people, many of them, especially in downtown, from 9th on to Bayfront, are in wheelchairs, motorized or otherwise, canes, crutches, walkers, and that should be a very important thing when wanting citizen participation is that we can accommodate these people in their rightful way, so they can be an active part of our Neighborhood Watch structure and not otherwise hindered by what would hinder them. Also, if you believe that for opening the building, this particular building, for this purpose would be no different than a public hearing, okay? If you believe that crime's not an issue that affects government and her citizens, and that we don't have an issue with crime in this community, if you believe that we don't have any drug activity out there, any loitering, people sitting on the sidewalks, then please, you have my blessing to go with Doug Mitchell. But our district attorney, Jack Neri, he had given me a call day after Thanksgiving, and he has endorsed me on obtaining council chamber support of this. He said he would talk to Doug Mitchell on Monday. So, I don't know what the outcome of that phone call is, but after this meeting, I will be looking forward to getting up with the district attorney again. In regards to EMTA, I have submitted to you the interview with Mike Tan into evidence through your mailboxes and other accounts that's been happening in the city lately. Ownership, accountability, financial responsibility, these things were somewhat discussed. It was a shame that we only had two people stand up for the city, and the rest of the citizens seemed to support the regionalized part. I believe, Council, that we need maybe an intermediary between both City Council and County Council, somebody that's a neutral figure, that just has an interest for the citizens, and instead of ramming heads against each council. You have more things in common with County Council than you realize. You both want the good for your citizens. You both want what's in the best interest of the Erie community at large. You both want to be able to have the right things for your people, and these are all great and wonderful things. But if the city and the county cannot come together by September, and that is only nine months away, I am afraid for what will happen for downtown and downtown residents. When the buses were taking off of State Street, as you can see, we have many more very disheveled buildings, blighted buildings that have gone out of business because of the lack of business traffic that happens on State Street. One block does make a difference. I will stand by that. I stood by that before. I stand by that again. For businesses, foot traffic is very important. That, and thank you for my time.
Thank you. And now we'll have other citizens to be heard.
Richard Wagner, 42nd and State. Amy, good job. Keep up the good work. Maybe you could even work on getting First Night Erie back. I lived downtown when that was part of downtown Erie, and it was pretty nice. Maybe you could attract some people back downtown. And David, the demolition ordinance that you're trying to get passed, I think it's a good effort to just slow things down, take a breath, and look at what's really happening with some of our old buildings that could never be replaced. So, good luck with that. Well, before I lose your attention, because now I'm going to talk about what I came down here for. Last night in Erie, there were two important events taking place pertaining to the city of Erie, the first being the takeover by the county of the EMTA. The second meeting taking place was a yearly ritual of sitting with Mr. Lichtenwalter down and having him spoon-feed the budget to each of you councilmen. Reality of the budget is that probably 90% consists of labor costs protected by long-term labor agreements. That leaves you council with about 10% of the total budget where a cut could occur. How many paper clips, boxes of paper, or cups of coffee would you have to cut to come up with a substantial savings? This is truly a waste of time. While this was occurring, County Council is trying to take over the operation of another authority, the EMTA. City Council wasn't represented. You were all here listening to Mr. Lichtenwalter. Also not present was anyone from the administration. Quite to the contrary, the county executive wasn't present at the meeting last night, but she did send her top aide. We sent no one. I wonder why county government and county council also seem to appear ready to take over an authority after the city spent an enormous amount of money, time, and energy to make certain authorities better. We spent $80 million, part of, on the runway project. The convention center hotels, $150 million, and now they want to get their fingers into the EMTA at a cost of $60 million. I've also questioned in my mind the autonomous authority concept that we have adopted in our city. There's absolutely nothing autonomous about any of our authorities. For example, the EMTA, in the middle of a $60 million expansion, is threatened by the politicians, not by its leadership or board. Autonomy is just a way for you politicians to avoid responsibility for your ineptitude. I was shocked when Kevin Flowers reported last week that Mr. Jones, who, by the way, is privy to information that would boggle the minds of a normal citizen, is trying to come up with creative ways to increase revenue. I beg Mr. Jones not to ignore the elephant in the room, which are nonprofits and authorities who don't pay property taxes, and instead, he wants to go after the snowplowers, landscapers, and garbage men for a license or a tax to work in the city. Also, from Mr. Jones' information, 18th and State, 18th and Cherry, and three properties on the 300 block of Myrtle have just been recently taken off the tax rolls. For what? Because these properties were acquired by nonprofits. For every step forward you take, unfortunately, you take two steps backwards. I think that it's time for a new group to be formed in the city. It will be called the Sixty Percenters. You might ask what that is. It's people who own the 60% of the property in the city of Erie that pay taxes to operate 100% of its operation. Fair and equitable is lost in this body. All I ever seem to hear is that you can't fix it. It has to come from Harrisburg. If no one from Erie complains to Harrisburg, why would they think anything needs to be fixed? For your information, it's not working. Get off your hands and start working to bring the taxation of the property situation in the city back to fair and equitable distribution. The Sixty Percenters might not have you over for a dinner at the Erie Club or give you free tickets to an event, but remember, the Sixty Percenters are the ones you come to when you want to get reelected. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Council, and I would also like to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. For reasons which I hope will become obvious, I respectfully decline to give you my name, but if you saw yesterday's headlines in the local paper, Erie Police Seek Burglars. Couple Uninjured After Shots Fired Inside Their Home.
Sir, you do need to give your name if you're going to speak in front of us in council.
I fear for my safety. I am the victim of this. I was shot at.
We can always speak to you after the meeting. I'd be glad to meet with you if you want to do that, if there's a concern. But yeah, the citizens to be heard, you're here to give your name and address, and that's how we work on this, and we can't change the rules.
Can you get that from the police report, or can I give it to you privately, sir?
Sure, absolutely.
All right. May I continue to speak, then?
Yeah, if you, you need to give your name and address to be able to speak. That's our procedure for speaking.
My address is in the papers, on East 30th Street, 1000 Block, East 30th Street. I did provide my phone number, rest I can get from the police report. I am in fear for my life still. I'd really request not to have as much information out as possible. You're on camera, I mean respectfully, so just to know that as well. I realize that, and I probably figure this is recorded as well.
Okay. Please proceed.
Thank you. I appreciate that. The paper continues to say that the couple fled in fear after someone had broken into their home, fired gunshots at them from inside their own house, end quote. I thought I was doing everything I could correctly to make it as difficult as possible for would-be burglars. There's no bushes around my house that they can hide in. Outside of my house is well-lit. I had four lights shining on the back door that they entered. My neighbors are literally a driveways width away. There are deadbolts on the two doors that are required to get into the main part of the house. These lights were all on. The doors were all locked, and despite all of that, when we returned shortly before 9:00 from dinner, we unfortunately discovered that all this was not enough to convince the perpetrators to go elsewhere and look for easier pickings. The newspaper article states that, quote, "As the victims went to get back into their car to contact police," I'm sorry, I'm still shaking, "gunshots were fired from inside their house," end quote. Actually, we were already in my Ford Explorer and in the process of calling 911 when the first shot shattered the passenger window immediately behind my head. Three additional rounds quickly followed. Ultimately, two of those rounds were in direct line of my head. One of them was in direct line of my heart, and I believe it's only by the grace of God that none of them actually penetrated this vehicle, and further believe it's only by God's providence that the detectives are only investigating a burglary and not a homicide. In closing, I have been all too aware of the apparent recent increase in gun violence in our city. I'd like to add my voice to the chorus that's been crying out, if something needs to be done about it. My wife and I were not confronting the perpetrators or hindering their actions in any way. In fact, both of us believe that the burglars are probably long gone. Yet, the burglars came out of my kitchen without hesitation or warning, fired a weapon through the window of my Florida room directly at my vehicle and at me. They were not intending to scare us away. It would not take four shots to do that. Those four shots were fired with the obvious intent of killing me and my wife, if possible, all over a few hundred dollars worth of material goods. I believe this shows that something in our society is definitely broke and needs fixed, and quickly. As of Sunday night, I am now a victim of intended homicide. As such, I respectfully suggest that the time of talking about what to do about this problem is long past, and the time to actually do something about the problem is long overdue. Again, I thank you for your time and for your efforts in resolving this situation.
Well, thank you for being here, and I appreciate your time. Hopefully, we could do something about this and be able to continue to work towards a solution. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Council, visitors and guests. My name is McDonald. My property's 19th and Reed. I, uh, watching TV. They got a situation in Chicago. The head policeman lost his job. I think they should have started with the mayor, because the mayor tells the chief what to do. And we have that same situation here. The mayor tells the chief what to do. I, I don't think, I think the chief should run for the office just like the mayor run for his, so that he could be an independent mind. It used to then be like that, but it's like that now. You know, we was asking for an oversight board here, and we were asking you all, but you all got to go to the mayor and ask him, "Is it okay?" And evidently, he said, "It's not." But you know, the mayor didn't vote for you all. The peoples, the taxpayers voted for you. Y'all need to get on the stick. It independent. Don't let nobody else make up your mind for you. If you make a wrong decision, let it be you making it. Don't let nobody else make up your mind. You can't tell me what to do. You could tell me the difference in right and wrong, and I'm going to listen to you, and I'm going to take what I see as right and use that. And that's what I wish you all would do, but you don't. You let somebody else make up your mind. I, if I'm correct, I think they said that the city of Chicago paid out $500 million for police killing up peoples and so on. But look, that's not a Chicago thing. That's across the country. They've been killing up black men's like they were flies. You know, like you see a fly and you swatting? That's what's been going on, and it's got to come to an end. We're more worried about those refugees over there in Syria than we are our own peoples here. You got to clean your house up before you go to somebody else and tell them about theirs. We got a job ahead of us. You got to start taking things serious. I know the police have a lot of authority here now. They don't even have no supervision out there when they, you know, go to a serious situation. That's not good. You used to see a leader there, but I haven't seen that lately, and that's too bad. That's too bad. I was on 19th Street one time, and I was walking down the street, and they had stopped a car across the street, and I stopped the, just looking. I'm way across the street, and I stopped the looking. And there was a tall, red-headed police there. He told me, "Get the hell on up the street." He didn't know me from Jack. That's not, that's not the way to talk to anybody. I can't stop and look? I didn't say a word. I just stopped and looked. You need to bring your police in. They're out of control. I'm surprised that things haven't really happened here in this town. I could understand why that gentleman just left here feel the way he do. That's a miserable feeling. That's a miserable feeling. We have police, they sitting somewhere, discussing things between them, and they should be out patrolling. We need beat patrolmen, for one thing. I don't know why. We can't have none. When we had beat patrolmen, we didn't have a lot of these situations we're having now. Evidently, y'all don't think that they should put their feet on the street walking around. All that money they getting, starting out at $41,000 a year, we should have beat patrolmen. They should be walking for some of that money, out there, looking out for the citizens. When you see a cop walking, if there's a, there could be a crime going to happen, and they will go on, you know, they'll get on away from that. So, y'all, consider the beat patrol, the beat patrolmen. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you for using that.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you this morning. I know that-
Do you give your name and address?
Thanks, Dave.
Please, thank you.
My name is Melinda Meyer. My address is 114 Carver Avenue, and I actually, I'm the chair of Preservation Erie, which is why I'm here. Over the last year, we've had the opportunity to work with City Council as well as members of the Erie community to talk a little bit about the demolition delay ordinance that is being proposed, well, a resolution is being proposed today to consider adding the demolition delay ordinance to the city's legislative structure. We have looked at, we have looked at model delay ordinances from cities that are larger than the city of Erie, smaller than the city of Erie, those that are located, communities that are located in Pennsylvania, communities that are located all across the country, that are using demolition delay ordinances to just cause kind of communities to pause before demolishing pieces of the historic fabric of the community. As you know, every healthy city has different components. We've heard a little bit about various components this morning, whether it be a healthy, healthy sense of security, an healthy infrastructure. Our built environment is also a part of that, and so, the historic structures that make up the city of Erie are incredibly valuable to its people. And I know, over the course of this past year, we've, we've had a lot of discussion about this, and we could tick off on our fingers the importance of historic preservation and the importance of our historic buildings, whether it be adding to the aesthetic value of our downtown or our neighborhoods, or adding to the, being one tool in our toolbox for economic and community development. We understand, you know, that our historic structures add to the city as a whole. And so, again, I don't want to take too much time this morning. I simply want to say, out of appreciation, that I appreciate City Council's openness to the dialogue over this past year in regards to the demolition delay ordinance. And, you know, I personally am thrilled with the present structure for that proposed ordinance. I think that we've done our due diligence in talking, again, with- we've done our due diligence in talking, again, with cities and towns across not just Pennsylvania, but also the country that have implemented similar ordinances. We've talked to them about the strengths and weaknesses and some of the challenges with those ordinances. Um... and I think that we have, um... a very good model, um... being set forth today. Uh... and what I think are some of the strengths of that model ordinance are the fact that the process, um... the process that both those applying for a permit, demolition delay permit, uh... will need to follow as well as it provides some structure for those here within City Hall that will be tasked with implementing, uh... the new regulations. Um... it is not cumbersome. Uh... it does not halt, uh... progress or economic development in any way, but again, simply causes us to pause for a brief moment before changing, again, that important historic fabric of the city itself, whether it be the commercial downtown or our residential neighborhoods. Um... and so, again, thank you for this past year. Uh... thank you for considering all of our arguments. Um... I know we've presented to you on multiple occasions, uh... both here during city council meetings and during study sessions. And so, um... we just look forward to seeing the legislation move forward and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other citizens to be heard?
Adam Trot, 531 West Sixth Street. Uh... there are several points I just want to hit on. Uh... one is, I'd like to commend the idea and the prosecution of this demo delay ordinance. Uh... it's important to understand, to augment what Melinda just said, that what makes Erie unique is not just the interesting buildings that it has, but the way those buildings are located to each other and the way those buildings enhance the overall quality of life in our town. And when you own a building like that, it's not a business deal and you can't just do anything you want with it because you own it. When you own property in this town, much like Mr. Wagner expressed, you're tied into this town. So, not only do you have the privilege of owning that property, but you also have the responsibility to be a good steward of that property and to make it enhance our community rather than detract. And this demolition delay ordinance is a very simple, almost baby step gesture to start moving the ball in that direction. So, I commend... I know that sort of thing takes a lot of work and I commend the people that have been doing that. So, thank you very much. That particular action is a good example of what's been talked about out on the street and in social media about lack of leadership at city council and how we can change that. And not just city council, but city hall. There's been the expression that city hall's filled with managers but not leaders. Managers react, leaders preempt. They look ahead and they get ahead of the curve. This... these kinds of actions like the demo delay ordinance is acting in leadership rather than management and I commend that. Thank you very much for doing that. Um... there was mention earlier about, uh... the county and the impression that maybe there's some stepping of the county on top of city responsibilities and actions. That's another consequence when you're not a leader. So, I think you'll be able to reverse that trend the more you advance leadership type activities rather than management. I'd also like to make a comment, um... that Bike Erie is ramping up. We've got a board now, we're active, and we're starting to move on initiatives. And I would like to bring to your attention the initiative of the Urban Erie Bike Trail, the loop around the city. That's a start. It's kind of like our flagship initiative about getting this city more biker and pedestrian friendly. But I look forward to, uh... having more dialogue with you about what Bike Erie's doing and soliciting your help as we make Erie a much better forward-thinking city. And like it's been said many times, we're losing our young because they can't find a job and they have issues with the quality of life in this town. These are steps we are taking to change that and I welcome the help that you can give us as we move forward on that. Um... other than that, thank you for giving me the opportunity to make comments and, uh... God bless you in this holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Um... any other citizens to be heard this morning? Are there any other citizens to be heard? And one last call. Any other citizens to be heard? Seeing none, uh... Ms. Roby, if we could continue with the rest of the meeting?
All right. Ordinances for final passage. Council File Number 15938, Official Ordinance Number 342015, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $12,500 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof, donation from the Star Athletic Club. By Mr. Kotowski and seconded by Mrs. Heran Kunso, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number Uh... oops. File number 15938, now known as Official Ordinance Number 342015, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Heran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. City Council pass official file ordinance number 342015, finally by A7, N0. A resolution by Mr. Brennan, seconded by Mr. Winarsky, resolved by the council of the city of Erie, that city council respectively request the city solicitor to prepare the following ordinance to encourage the preservation of architecturally and historically significant buildings by delay of demolition. Copy of the proposed ordinance is attached here too. Mrs. Heran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. By Mrs. Heran Kunso, seconded by Mr. Winarsky, resolved by the council of the city of Erie, whereas the Water Reserve Investment Committee and its consultant have undertaken a comprehensive rewrite of the Water Reserve Investment Policy Statement and whereas the city council of the city of Erie has reviewed the new investment policy statement for the Water Reserve Fund and the Water Reserve Investment Committee recommends adoption of the investment policy statement. Therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Erie, the Water Reserve Fund Investment Policy Statement attached heretofore is adopted.
Mr. President, could I explain that?
Yes, Ms. Kunso.
Okay, thank you. Um... the Water Reserve Investment Committee, um... has worked with our consultant to rewrite our investment policy statement. We've been working on this for several months now. Um... Councilman Kotowski and Councilman Witherspoon share that committee and also the city controller and the finance department and a representative of our city clerk's office. The, um... the new policy, um... excludes investments that were, um... in the past, uh... the funds were invested in part and, um... we received an audit finding that ensured us that we weren't allowed to invest in different kind of partnerships and whatnot. So, it limits the fund to being invested essentially in securities, stocks and bond market. Um... it defines the risk tolerance and it outlines the goals of the fund, including to be able to bring 4% of the total fund value into the city each year for capital needs. Um... so, this just kind of updates the fund and the purpose of the Water Reserve Investment. It also just defines that committee that I talked about. The committee meets quarterly. The committee looks very closely at the performance of the fund. Um... our consultant provides a quarterly report, uh... of all the performance of the fund managers and compares them to benchmarks so that we're looking at apples to apples on what our funds should be doing. Um... so, this is just an opportunity to make sure that everything is up to date and relevant and continue the great performance that fund has been doing. That fund is... the Water Reserve monies are the only funds that are under the complete jurisdiction of council. Council controls the spending of that money. It does require a six of seven majority vote, uh... to move funds from that account. That account is supposed to be really reserved just for capital needs. So, I hope that continues and it has grown from when we first rewrote the policy when I took over the committee in '09. There was $6 million in that fund and there was no fixed spending rate at that time. There was no commitment made by the council to bring that money over into the capital needs of the city. We put that in the first rewrite in 2009. And, um... since then, there's over $10 million in the fund and that is with us using those funds for the purpose of capital needs of the city. So, I continue to, um... make sure that that fund is doing well. In my absence, this new policy should keep things going, so I appreciate that.
Ms. Kunso, is there any other questions or comments on council?
Um... Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Witherspoon.
Uh... I'd like to publicly, uh... thank Councilwoman Kunso for an outstanding job and leadership with the, uh... the committee. Uh... for a long time, she has put a lot of time and a lot of her personal time in it to make sure and guide us in the right direction. Uh... she rules that committee with a iron fist, trust me on that one. And, uh... it shows, uh... the result shows that she's done outstanding job and she will be missed, but she will not be that far away that we can't give her a phone call. Great job.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. And I appreciate the two councilmen who've been attending and, um... I've wrote... I'm very confident that they'll be able to carry it on and that they're going to be good leaders of that committee in my absence. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counsel?
It's been a pleasure serving with Jessica. For the public to understand the, uh... shape that that fund was in, uh... would be appalling. At one time, it was a very vibrant fund, but due to some council's administration, it was decimated to the point that was almost embarrassing. And now, we're at a point where we are returning money to the city every year and hopefully, you know, our goal is to give them more money and less... you know, the more we can give them, the less we have to go to the citizens. And, uh... you know, it's a hard-working board and I give the previous councils credit for taking it back as their stewardship, as it was designed. And I'm confident that, you know, future councils and committees will do the same hard work that this council has done and past councils in returning this fund to what it should be. And, uh... it's not an easy job, much like the pension plans, but, you know, when you have a dedicated board, a dedicated chairman... and once again, I'd like to thank Mrs. Kunso for her leadership during the last few years. And, uh... rest assured that, uh... we hope that that fund will continue to grow and give more money back for capital improvement projects to help this great city grow again.
Thank you, Ms. Kotowski. Okay, um... I think that's... was there comments? Uh... Ms. Roby, if we could continue with the meeting?
All right, roll call. Mrs. Heran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Mersky.
I'd like to make a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh-oh. Do we have a second? Uh... do we have any separations?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Um... could I abstain from number three on regarding the council government's budget, please?
Okay. Ms. Kunso can sustain from three.
Okay.
And we'll vote on the balance of the agenda?
Okay, moving the balance of the agenda. Mrs. Heran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. That'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Thank you. Um... Mr. Kotowski, uh... report, council report today?
It'll be a real quick one. I just want to, you know, tell everybody that, yes, it's true, none of us could attend the EMTA yesterday, but our higher priority is the budget of this city. And we have met with the county. But I want to remind people that, uh... all the statements that are made about the contribution of the city going away, that's not true. And it's time that, you know, the truth be told. Not only do we give, as a city, a contribution to the EMTA, but we also give a contribution as county residents. So, I think that's a sight... some things are forgotten that, yes, the city is part of the county. So, we give a lot more than the figures they reported. Knowing that, even if the county were to take over the EMTA, rest assured that these... the citizens of Erie being probably the largest... well, they... we are the largest, uh... political subdivision, will pay a large portion of any money they put into the EMTA. So, let's not lose track of that. And, you know, this is... this is all about what's best for the community and what's best for the county. So, as one of our councilmen once said, "If it's not broken, let's not worry about it." We can always fine-tune it or fix it, but we don't need to throw out the baby with the bathwater. So, rest assured, council is... is on this issue and we're not, you know, merely letting it go by the window. Uh... I want to congratulate, uh... President Brennan on his demo ordinance. As a young man who saw the effects of what happens when a community demolishes many of its old structures with no plan to replace them or no plan to renovate them, you see what happened in Erie. Much of downtown was turned into parking lots and, uh... empty lots for a number of years. So, to ask people to slow down, to take a look at our assets, you know... it wasn't too long ago that the Warner Theater was in danger of being balled. And if it wasn't for a few people at that time, the mayor, council that took control of it, we would have been without another gem. And we've lost so many buildings that I think it's time that, uh... we look at... we look at things a little different. People say, "Well, all the old buildings are gone. Why do it now?" Well, the buildings that exist now will be the old buildings in the future and they will have some historical architectural relevance. So, I'm glad that this council is taking another step, which brings me to my one question that people accuse us of being rubber stamps and not doing much. I'll remind you that, you know, we could all get in the paper and decide to change every... everything all at once, but that wouldn't work. But this council's been very targeted. We have taken on one issue after another slowly and made sure that that issue gets taken care of. That's a lot better approach than just trying to grab a lot of press and saying, "We're doing 20 things and nothing gets done." Uh... we've done some things very successful. The garbage, uh... David's new thing here with the demo ordinance. The EMTA will be another issue, but there'll be other issues that this council will attack as was pointed out earlier. We are looking at new ways to get revenue for the city so that the citizens that live here are not the only ones that pay their fair share. So, there'll be more things coming, so don't think that this council is unproductive. I'm proud to serve with them and I think that when we start targeting issues, we get them accomplished slowly and very efficiently so that they are accomplished and we have some at the end of the day to say it was done properly. And I wish everybody a very happy holidays and Merry Christmas coming up and, uh... thank you. That's my report.
Thank you, Ms. Kotowski. Mr. Winarsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to follow up with CAS on the EMTA, we've... as a council, we have been in discussion with our different options that we feel we have and what are advantages of the being part of the city of Erie. Uh... without getting in great detail at this point, we are on this and we're not sitting back, but, uh... more to follow. Um... I want to thank my colleagues with these budget sessions as well as, uh... it is a lot easier when we're presented with a balanced budget. Uh... I don't see no major obstacles to passing the budget, but a lot of things are out of our control in the budget when it comes to wages and stuff, but we did get good dialogue and conversation with how we can improve, say, our revenues and grow those. So, although the budget process may be a little easier this year because it is balanced, we still are working hard to try to look for years to come on how we can have balanced budgets for years to come. With that being said, have a good evening... or have a good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Winarsky. Mr. Jones?
Uh... no report, Mr. President.
Ms. Kunso?
No report, Mr. President. No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Kunso. Ms. Mersky, it's me, a quick meeting.
I just, I don't have anything to report from many of my authorities or liaisons, but I do wanted to bring attention to a couple things. First off, I wanted to thank Bishop Brock for his program mentoring young people and training them for positions in the community. You know, I think sometimes people in this community look for government to be the cure-all, and here's a private organization, and they're doing good things, training young people, connecting young people to training, and then connecting the training to jobs. And I think that's a thing that we should celebrate and be, I commend Bishop Brock for, for doing that, and, you know, those are the types of things that are going to get this city moving from not just the government side, but we also need the private sector involved, and, and that's a great thing. And I want to thank Hammett Hospital as well, UPMC Hammett, for participating in that program. That's a great community partnership there. Councilman Kotowski and I honored the police and fire departments respectively with the Seventh Day Adventist Church. They had a event for them, and we're always glad for the work that they do. And finally, over my Thanksgiving break as fire liaison, I visited all the firehouses and talked with the firefighters and took, took account of, you know, what's going on at our firehouses and what needs there are, and I've talked to the chief about some of the things that we can do to improve our firehouses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winarsky. Mr. Witherspoon?
No report.
Oh, I'm sorry. So sorry.
I'm joking.
Ms. Mersky?
Wrong ski.
I'm sorry. That's the first time I did that. I apologize. Mr. Witherspoon?
No report.
After all that. Okay, our controller, any?
I have no report either.
Okay. Jill, any administration? Boy, that's, that's too simple. I have a few things I wanted to go through. First of all, I know the, several council members talked about the EMTA, and I really just have two questions. I'm still looking for the answer for those. What is the best solution for our citizens and the ridership? So, still looking to see what, what all of the benefits are, and then also, what are the benefits of the county authority? And so, I'm, you know, I'm still, I know there was a presentation last night, so I know there was some, a lot of, a lot of discussion on it. So, those are the answers, the questions I have that I want to look to get answers on as we go forward in this discussion. The budget, as everyone know, everyone knows, we've been reviewing with each department the last few days. We'll finalize our reviews with the departments today, and then we'll meet and deliberate any possible changes or recommendations for the budget before we would vote at our next meeting. And lastly, with the demolition delay ordinance that was proposed, that's on the agenda too, proposed today. I have been researching this and looking at different options to try to find the, kind of the best fit for what we have in Erie. And as was mentioned earlier, I have been talking to the solicitor. We've had several other approaches that I've been kind of put forward, and, you know, we, after we kind of looked at the Pennsylvania state law, it didn't really work. But I think this, this current ordinance that we're looking at now, that we're going to be studying, is, I think, is a good approach that would work for Erie, and I think it answers some of the questions that we, we were kind of holding this up before, so hopefully we'll continue to go forward. But this ordinance would create a Erie's first historic review committee. We, we never had such a committee, and really Erie's first actual ordinance created with the goal of encouraging preservation, rehabilitation, and reuse of historic structures in Erie. But I, I think this is, again, as was mentioned earlier, this is a small step, but I think it's needed for our city, and I think there's many benefits, economic development, just the beauty of our city. There's, there's so many things, I can kind of go on. But I did, I did want to mention, I did talk to John Lipchik before the meeting. He's a demolition contractor who does a lot of demolition work in Erie, and he had some misconceptions, and he thought we were voting on a final ordinance today, and I said, no, there's a lot of details to kind of run through. And I told him I wanted to meet with him personally to, and I'll be calling him up this week to, to schedule a meeting, but to discuss all the intricacies of the permitting process and hit several concerns. We definitely want to address those, but we, we do not want to hold up buildings that are obviously not significant and then are not going to, that are obviously falling down or, or buildings that have no significance that the owner just wants to get rid of for some reason, possible for redevelopment. So, I think that we need to come up with the solutions and answer to all those questions the best we can, and I think this will be great for City of Erie as a son for the future. So, with that, that'd be the meeting. Thank you.
City Council adjourn at 10 o'clock. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon.
Time to want to get started at 10:30, 10:15, 10:20?
Thank you.